This meeting from DDR's East Movement to order. This meeting is being, oh, I have a gallop. This meeting is being recorded and your image or voice may be broadcast. We're going to begin with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on our nation under God, invisible, ready, and just as for all.
Do we have any public comments tonight? Here and then. Has anyone, any members, have you received communications that you would like to share? Moving on to item five, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Adam?
Adam.
Second, thank you Julie. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented passes. I was going to have Mr. Many handspeak since he's not here just yet. Not sure if he's coming or not. We'll move on to our candidates, our candidate interviews. Because we do have people here for our vacancy, which is pretty exciting. I'd like to welcome Mrs. Kyle Burns and Mr. Robert Holmes for our school committee meeting tonight. Both have generously volunteered to fill the empty Berlin seat left by the resignation of Susan Henry in February. I would like to extend a sincere thank you to both of you for your interest in representing your town and the schools for the next six months. As you may have heard, for the Boylston, Berlin-Boylston regionalization agreement, we are all up for reelection in November. I'm going to follow the same system that Mr. Spencer employed in August when we were going through the appointments. So part one is that we've reviewed all of your letters of interest and resumes and we've independently researched you on our own time. As may include past communications as well as publicly available information. I will invite you to come forward, introduce yourself and share with us a little bit about yourself. We'd like to keep it to three minutes if possible. And each member will have the chance to ask a question they are prepared. They will ask the same question to each candidate. And there may be follow-up questions from the committee to those questions. And then, once the interviews are completed, we will openly debate, deliberate on the floor. This means that all discussion is going to be public. It's going to be as awkward for you as it is for us. Once we have completed deliberations, I will ask for a committee member to appoint a candidate to fill the open seat. This requires a second from another member. If there is no second, it doesn't move on to discussion and the motion doesn't pass. When there is a second, it goes into a discussion and then a vote. In order to be appointed, we need at least, well, I was going to say three of five, but three of four. Correct, because that would be, yeah, three of four members to vote in favor of the candidate. If three dissent, the motion doesn't pass. Should the motion fail and there is still candidate left, we start the whole process all over again using the same parameters for success. And it's hard to take this advice, but please don't be nervous. Every member here has been appointed. Some of us had other people that we had to stand up and, you know, speak for ourselves and hope that we were the best candidate. But regardless of whether we had competition or not, you know, we know what it's like to be in your place. And we just want you to know we're not trying to stump you. We just want to try to get to know you better. So, any questions before we start? I would like to invite Mrs. Kyle Burns from Berlin. The seat. Right there. Thank you, Julie. Do you want to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure.
And why you'd like to be on school committee?
Absolutely. Good evening, members of the committee, school community. It's a pleasure to meet you. My name is Kyle Burns and I am a resident of Berlin, Massachusetts. I have a first grader at Berlin Memorial. My younger son will start kindergarten in the year, in the school year of 2023. We're just beginning our family's academic journey and I'm eager to engage and support the school and the district communities in as many ways as I can. We're also new to Massachusetts. And as I told my husband when we moved in last summer, joining, participating, volunteering will be our way to meet and become a part of this community. And so, we've been to all the town activities. We've given to the fundraisers and teacher appreciation activities. I am a lasagna lover volunteer, making and giving lasagna to local families in need. And now, I find myself with this unique opportunity to bring my background into service for the Berlin-Boylston Regional School District. To that extent, I have a master's degree in organization development and knowledge management, a certificate in leadership coaching, and I am an entrepreneur. I have a career's worth of examples that indicate I have the knowledge and ability to assess, develop, and execute quality learning programs. I've had clients across all sectors, from academic institutions to large corporate entities. And I believe that my experience thus far gives me a really strong position to delve into the research and the understanding around issues that the school committee will face. I know that I can bring a level of curiosity and questioning to school committee business that offers new perspective and new potential ideas for addressing that business. My husband Brian and I and our two sons have felt very welcomed into this community. I'm eager to take your questions and offer what support I can to continue and build on the good work of this school committee. Thank you.
Do you want to start maybe with Julie? And then, Julie, you ready?
No, I'm ready. I just have to flip because I write everything down.
It's hard because you come with a couple of questions in case somebody else.
Right.
I have my questions, so you got to choose.
Let's see. All right, here we go. I'm ready. Okay, Kyle, nice to meet you. So first off, thank you for the first step forward. This serving volunteer is a big task, so thank you for that. All right, I see that you have one child in elementary school and one yearing at Berlin Memorial School, which is a terrific school, as you know.
Yes.
It really is. So my question to you is how would you seek to understand issues that affect Boylston Elementary School and the middle high school with your children being as young as they are?
Sure. So we, as I said, we wanted to participate in as much as possible. So we are currently deep in baseball land, which is west Boylston, Boylston and Berlin. We also did soccer in the fall, so we met lots of parents and families from both regional areas. I also, this is a funny connection. When I was 18 years old, I traveled with an international community service organization called People. And one of my very best friends, we lived for a year, traveled the world doing service and learning about the people of the world. She lives in Boylston. Her two kids are now here in Toronto. So of all the world's places to end up, I'm seven miles from a person who I love dearly and have that great insight, insight into the Boylston world through her. And she's been such a helpful friend just in letting us get connected. So I think, right now, I've started the process, right? We're new and we're just getting involved, finding ways to cross the boundaries and barriers if there are any. I don't know, I haven't experienced them because we keep crossing them naturally. So I think that's just the best way for me to move forward anyway, to build the community and certainly to understand what's happening both in Boylston and in Berlin and be able to address those needs here at the committee.
Thanks. I also have a first grader in Berlin too, so maybe, I don't know.
Most likely.
Yeah. Well, my question is about the budget. The last few months, we've been discussing the budget here. We've been seeing the presentations and the towns just voted on them. So in your opinion, what's the most important part of the budget we should be looking at next year, in the next year?
Well, I haven't seen budget in particular. And the last time we used our Facebook game, so I missed the time meeting itself. But, that said, I've worked with budgets through my, in previous life, I worked for the National Student Organization. I've worked for nonprofits. The budgets are a huge part of what the organization does. And in my experience, I know that putting the mission first is always what needs to happen. So in terms of what this school committee has to look at, I imagine looking at curriculum quality, looking at hands-on learning opportunities for all pre-K through 12 is going to be incredibly important. Obviously, there's a balance these days in cleaning and sanitizing and making sure that we have good air and all of the, all of the schools themselves are ready to support a clean and safe learning environment in all ways possible. So without knowing the budget, that is where, where I would look. Mission first, quality curriculum, and beyond that, how, how the school itself is operating.
Once again, thanks for joining us. I represent, well, from Boylston and have a son at Boylston Elementary Schools. Also, an excellent school, I bet. So my question is, you know, the mitigation of COVID-19 has been the topic of much discussion in our meetings for the past two years. The most notable actions taken in that time were to close the schools and to require that people wear masks in school buildings. We've now seen student performance data that indicates that there was harm done due to our response to COVID. How would you, decision-making process be on topics related to COVID mitigation in the future?
Sure. So I think the data shows nationally, all students' performance is down because of COVID in general, because of closing their schools, because of not having strong learning opportunities with the right environment. Face-to-face is obviously the best for homeschool. So that said, it's happening everywhere, not just here. And so the efforts that this district have taken are pretty incredible. And frankly, when my son entered at the beginning of the year and did the assessments, he qualified for reading support and math support in likelihood because he chose to homeschool and all of that stuff last year because of it, right? And he's already, he's soaring. He's skyrocketing now, it's amazing. So what was and what will and what's happening are different things. At the same time, science needs to drive future choices. So as COVID numbers are going up, I do think we need to keep an eye on what's happening in our communities, what our hospital loads out, what CDC recommendations are. I come from a background in science. My father's a PhD geneticist and husband works in pharmaceuticals. He does drug development, understands what a vaccine does and how it's developed and is on top of all of it. I myself volunteered early in the pandemic with FDA to become vaccine community speaker. It was a Zoom, Zoom class on how vaccines are a primary, what vaccine does, what's M and R was, and how to then use good, solid data and knowledge to go forward and advocate for people to, to make smarter public health decisions. And I think going forward in schools, that's what it is. Frankly, if we can keep in school but put masks back if they are needed, that's what I would 100% go for because that is one of the real obvious choices for protecting our students and allowing them to have their face-to-face interaction with peers and teachers. Not the best, obviously, we want this thing to go away. But it's not going to go away unless we continue to take the right steps to protect our community. And there are members of our community who are completely unprotected at this point. You know, I have a little guy who can't be vaccinated yet, so I am very conscientious and aware of how to protect him. And the risk that my first grader brings home from school every day because of his interactions there. But it's also the balance of what's going to occur in school. So you do what's necessary. I will always lean on the side of science.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask a two-part question, but they're, they're connected. First is what made you decide to seek the open position? And then what qualities and experience you have that you think lends itself to being on the committee?
Sure. So my first reason is my sense, obviously, like most of you. They're very young, we're just getting started. And I know this year at Berlin Memorial has been phenomenal. The support, the care, the academics, it's, it's been, I mean, he skips to the school bus, yes. He skips to the school bus. He's afraid of summer. Well, what about school? So we'll, we'll deal with that as it is. So that's my first reason. Secondly, though, I have an earned bias, right, from my experience in education and learning. And that is that hands-on experiential learning serves all people really, really well. Because then you can do the reflection, that is the verbal learning, that is the, that is the kinesthetic, that is the oral learning, all of that supports it. But that kinesthetic, hands-on piece really gives everybody at all levels something to work with, to grab on, to make connections between what happens in the classroom and what happens in the middle. So I will be an advocate from my background in creating learning, from my background of assessing learning, and to finding opportunities to support whatever might come through the door. I know that there's been a lot of hands-on science in the ponds and scary stories of snakes and things lately. I love it, hate it, but I love it, right? Can't do the snake, but can do the hands-on. And so I will be an advocate for, for really high-quality learning in particular, anything that may emerge in a hands-on way. And then third, as, as a new member to the community, I met Mrs. Rappa on the phone, the school secretary, and she was phenomenal. She helped me do the registration, she offered a tour through the school, it was wonderful. And yet, whether it's available or having the ability to access a communication from the district and the school on just how things work, where to find forms, that sort of thing, has been hard to come by. So I would be an advocate for, the reason I wanted to be here is to advocate for just stronger levels of communication between the committee and the constituents that it serves. And I know not all business can be discussed until it is public. But once it is, a strong communication plan and a way to outreach to people. A new family welcome and that's, don't forget, there is a form that you have to have on file in order to do that field check that you want to do at the end of the year. Dun-dun-dun, you know? That sort of thing. So those are my few reasons.
Excellent. Thank you. Does anyone have any follow-up questions? Thank you, Kyle, really appreciate it.
Absolutely, it's my pleasure. Thank you all.
And now I'd like to invite up Mr. Holmes.
Thanks. Hello. Hello, community members. Thank you very much for having me tonight. My name is Bob Holmes. I have been a resident of the town of Berlin for about 10 years now. I have three daughters at Berlin Memorial, a kindergartner, first grader, and a second grader. I've lived in Massachusetts the majority of my life. I graduated from WPI in the year 2000 with a degree in chemical engineering. I've worked in many industries in my career, doing advanced research for the first half and product development for the second half and currently. I've led the development and launch of products you might actually recognize from companies like Curig and Thermacell and now iRobot. But regardless of where I've worked or what industry I serve, a common theme has been present throughout my career and that's been working with teams. Specifically, teams with individuals that have very different backgrounds, different priorities, different points of view and different personalities. I've been successful in motivating groups of people to achieve common goals despite our own unique and individual differences. I think that my ability to hear perspectives, ask kind questions and help guide a group to consensus would be an asset to the school committee. Throughout my life, service has been an important and consistent theme. It probably started when I was younger on my journey to becoming an Eagle Scout, where service is a key premise. In high school, as part of the National Honor Society, service to our community was also important. The theme of service continues throughout my family's experiences today at our church, where I teach pre-K and kindergarten Sunday school and serve our community in other ways as well. I believe service to our community is important. I've been considering how I might further serve my community for some time. I've been an active member of our town and have filled a number of informal roles but have been searching for a place to really sink my teeth in. When the spotlight shone on our school committee during the height of the pandemic, I remember having two major takeaways. One, wow, this is a really important job. And two, I don't envy any of you. As the time passed and I contemplated where I could direct my energy, I remembered my encounters with the school committee. The hard work required of them, the thankless nature of the job, but most of all, the importance of that role for our kids. Our kids spend a significant amount of time in our school system. This experience will influence their view of education for the rest of their lives. School is a place that can inspire children's greatness. It will inform their social identities, drive curiosity, influence personalities and underpin their means of forming relationships. It's a crucial component of our children's adolescence. Being a part of the committee that helps shape that experience for our kids feels like the absolute best place for me to direct my energy. And so for those reasons, I've decided to formally seek an opportunity to serve on the committee and I hope they will consider me for the role. Thank you.
Julie?
I'm sitting right. Right. All right, same question, in the same row. Thank you. Are you willing to serve? Same question as I asked Kyle. I see you have children leaving elementary school at Berlin Memorial School. Terrific school. Those lessons. How would you seek to understand issues that affect the ES, Boylston Elementary School and the Toronto Middle and High School with kids that are young?
Yeah. Great, great question. Thank you. So we do have, you know, our social network does extend into the town of Boylston. But the, you know, eight friends we have in Boylston probably doesn't represent the entire town fairly. So an idea I would have would be to try to partner with others on the school committee that are in Boylston where we can leverage each other's networks within our respective towns. Perhaps I could invite a member from the Boylston town to join us at social events, community events in Berlin and potentially reciprocate the other way to try to get a sense of what's happening in my community.
That's great. Thanks, Kyle.
Well, thanks. Budget being one of the three things that we actually have some direct involvement in, what should we be focusing on next year with budget? It was the most crucial.
Yeah, tough question. And you would think that being able to listen to all these questions first would give me advantage, but it's not like Mrs. Burns and her answers is not. So again, I don't, like, like Mrs. Burns, I don't have the context for around the budget items. So it would be difficult and maybe short-sighted to take a stab at answering that without that context. But I do have extensive experience managing budgets. I understand how to allocate funds to different, to different categories. I understand that sometimes we have to make tough commitments and tough decisions. So I think, honestly, I think Mrs. Burns knocked it out of park where prioritizing what's around the mission and curriculum is priority, followed by operational needs, key school planning.
Do you mind if I ask a follow-up on Julie's question first? So to Julie's question around having children leave their new school, you spoke about the Boylston side, but specific to Toronto. You know, the fact that issues that might face middle school or high school would be differently issued than we might see daily in our elementary school, where our kids are in school. How would you seek to understand the operations and the challenges and successes of the middle school and high school?
You have to go there, right? You have to be present, be present at events that you might not normally be invited to as a parent, but be there as a school committee member. You know, speak with members of the administration, speak with members of the faculty, speak with parents, you know, provided that it's within the guidelines of our local school committee. I would want to talk to many members of the community of Boylston and Berlin as possible to get an understanding of what's on their mind.
Thank you. So to my question, the mitigation of COVID-19 is the topic of much discussion in our meetings the past two years. Some of the most notable actions taken in that time were to close the schools and to require that people wear masks in school buildings. We've now seen that student performance has, some of our communications have done harm in our response to COVID-19 based on student performance data we have available to us. What would your decision-making process be if you are asked to vote on topics related to current education in the future?
Yeah, so we've all become advocates for science, I think, these days. I certainly have been in, throughout my career professionally. I think what's, what's critical is that we really assess, you know, as many different angles of the problem as we possibly can. It's, it can be tempting to, to get wrapped up in a headline or, or a common, a common thread that might be popular. But, but I really do think it's, it's crucial that we listen to all, all aspects, all members of the community that have a voice in the matter and look at, look at the problem comprehensively rather than getting swept up with trend. So it would be about listening to the community first, collecting data that not just supports a particular conclusion of your life, but really challenges it and stress tests, you know, all potential solutions, which is the best. Thank you.
So my question would be, what prompted you to seek this appointment? And what are you bringing to the table that will make you a break-in moment?
Yeah, so as I, as I mentioned in my intro, you know, serving the community was not an if for me. It was a when. And really, the, it just really needed to come together once, once I was able to create some time in my life personally to, to offer that service and make the commitment. I'm at that point now. And so I've really kind of assessed what opportunities there are and where my strengths might be able to be utilized the best. You know, given my background in managing cross-functional teams, making complicated decisions with significant consequences, you know, I think I could bring a unique perspective to the committee. One that listens, that advocates for different viewpoints from a diverse group, a diverse group from the community. And, you know, I think I would be able to use empathy specifically to really consider, consider each and every member of the committee's viewpoint and then try to make an objective decision.
Any follow-up question? Thank you, Mr. Holmes.
Thank you.
Now we get to the deliberation portion. And this is where we discuss the candidates. And after we've discussed them, I'll ask for a motion to appoint one of our advocates to fill the vacant. So does anyone want to begin?
No. I kind of jumped down some, some classes as I was listening to you. Would you be able to answer our questions? One of the things I want to point out that I really love, and I kind of thought about was community outreach. And I think it's an area, I know that I completed my own self-evaluation of the school committee. I have recognized that it's a gap, a substantial gap for the school committee. And we are a lot of work to do to be able to communicate with the community with the identity of the school committee. And so I certainly really appreciate the sort of acknowledgement of that. And their focus, actually, I wish I had a friend that was, was, was real great. Another thing I would just say about Bob, you know, I, I like the tenure he's had within the community. He hasn't been a resident of Berlin for 10 years. I think that gives someone a deeper perspective on, on our community's focus in Boylston and Berlin and our school district. And I also thought about what you said about working with teams and being able to drive groups towards consensus. I know that we always have a goal within the committee of, at the very least, you know, hearing everyone out and driving towards the closest we can come to consensus. We don't know if we can get there. But I think that, that skill is one that you certainly value and could enter from.
Yeah, it would be so much. Not, Kyle's very, Kyle's handy, well, getting involved, learning, great. And Bob spoke a lot towards that community field, the leadership, the team building, which, as we've seen over the last, what was it, two, three months? Is huge. It really makes the work better, easier, smoother. So from my self-evaluation last year, communication outreach is in there, it's in building, also part of it. So I like that.
I think you're both outstanding. I think that for Kyle, I love the, being an advocate for hands-on learning and higher, high-quality learning, especially now we are all coming off COVID and there was so much learning done on devices and that's really tripled into the classrooms substantially. So I like that that's one to be a focus area of Kyle's. For Bob, there were so many things that I just pulled toward. I love that service was never an empty plan. I love the idea of empathy to make objective decisions, especially now where it's very easy to not do that, to do with other. His background of working with diverse teams is very appealing. And I liked how, Adam, you asked a follow-up question to mine. How will you, how will you understand, to get a little more into detail, how people understand that middle high school? Because when I was in elementary school, you just can't, you can't understand middle high school until you're present in it. And that's no fault of anybody, that's just how it is. But I thought, I thought his answer was great, that he said he would be president of events if the school committee member were, he wouldn't otherwise be invited. And I think that also speaks to that bridging the gap between our community and our district, which I had to, which was Kyle's saying, just went by. which I had to, which was Kyle's saying, just went back in our communication base, so I did that.
I really liked your budget question, Mike. That's a really hard question. I don't know how I would have answered that prior to being on the school committee. I like that. I liked that Kyle has worked for nonprofits. And I also liked Bob's experience as well, you know, working with their companies. And it's just going to be a very hard decision because I feel like they're both extremely qualified. And it's just tough because they're both so likable too. So I guess this one, are there any other, does anybody want to do any more deliberation?
I just, I'm pleased to see parents in, both of you stepping up and wanting to do this. But I think it's incredibly important that parents who have students in our school district are willing to step up and take these roles and I can applaud you both for that. Because it's, it's the right thing in my opinion, but on top of that, it's difficult sometimes because you're going to have to make decisions that may not agree with your child's best friend and what their parents think. And that, that's a challenging thing to take on sometimes. And so whatever ends up happening, best of luck to both of you.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll move to no name, Ms. Holmes.
Is there a second? Okay, is there any discussion?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll say at this point, you know, I, I never met Bob until today, but I, I wrote a comment to say that back in the perhaps of 2021, when decisions were being made about reordering the schools and when to reorder the schools and how to reorder the schools. I distinctly remember the Bob Earl letter to the school committee at that time. I remember that letter got posted on Facebook. Remember I, you know, Bob, myself, I would live, I've never met him before, and said, you should put your name in for the school committee. The election, it's going to be in November by the way, so whoever gets appointed, everyone can run in November, remember? And I have an opportunity. But I, I think that I recognized prior to myself being on the school committee and prior to being opening that the way he approached the commentary he made at that school committee meeting, when you and Mike and Julie at the time were considering when probably opening schools, was something I valued as a, as a parent of the district or a future parent of the district. And so that plays a role in my interest in supporting him.
I would actually like to add that that reminded me a lot of you. Because when we were going through the throes of COVID and you were very intent on making sure that we had our election, which was the right thing to do, we had a nice baffling work with one another. And it really shows character when you're discussing difficult topics that are really, can be very emotional. To be able to be rational and kind is a big deal. I thought that was interesting. I, I thought the same, like.
To reiterate what Adam said, you're going to face decisions that are tough because of your kids being in school. And we both, we all, three of us have kids in the same class. It's a tough call. A call has to be made. But again, like Adam said, there will be an election, so please participate.
So with that, we will move to a vote. All in favor of appointing Mr. Robert Holmes to fill the vacant seat in Berlin on the school committee?
I.
I.
opposed? I'm an I as well. Welcome, Mr. Holmes and Mrs. Burns. I'm really sad that we don't have two spots because you're put on. It's okay. I hope you'll arrive in November. Thank you. And Kristy, just a point in order, will we, will you talk to Bob and explain what his next step is?
Yeah.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you. So we are going to move on to our post-New York City field trip report. Mr. Minahan, he's brought some students with him. Come on up.
So hello, everybody, SCARU members. We had a trip to New York City on the 13th of May, which was about 10 days ago. I came before the school committee the last time I proposed the idea. And I had a number of interesting questions about delays and how to deal with that. And we had a brief delay on the way home. But other than that, everything ran really smoothly. And Kayden and Rebecca and Sydney were three of the six students on the trip. And they can field any questions that people have, experience, what they learned. Will you open it up to anybody? Any, anybody?
What's your favorite part? What did you do that was the best part of this trip, education wise and fun wise?
Either the art museum or the food. So food was everywhere, easy to come by, cheap, so that was awesome for me. And the exhibits at the art museum was pretty cool to see.
Yeah, I was just there Friday, actually. You're right, the food is great.
I don't have anything specific, but I've never been to New York before this trip. So just to be there, walking around, even, was just really interesting. And they do not lie about New York pizza being really good.
I think my favorite part, like fun wise, was definitely the pizza. The pizza was really good. But like the, going to the art museum was really cool because you could see a lot of the stuff, like, I've seen some of the like works online, but seeing them in person is like a different experience. So it was really cool to see them like in person.
And I would just say, since it's open to everybody, my favorite part. Sydney told me about a painting, which is The Death of Socrates, which is by Jacques Louis David. And it's at the Metropolitan Museum of Art and she had read up on it. And I realized that this painting was in the textbook that we got this year. So that was kind of a neat connection. And I also saw their painting by the same artist that happened to be on the cover of a collection of plays by Euripides that I read during seventh grade this year. So I read Hecuba. As part of the change in the curriculum standards, we were incorporating ancient Greece and Rome. And so we read this play. And on the cover of the particular copy that I have is another painting by Jacques Louis David, The Morning of Andromache, who is the wife of Hector, who was a great Trojan hero. And so to see both those paintings up close and have a connection through the text is really nice. And for Sydney to say, oh, she had gone out and researched that, there was a very nice connection. That was, you know, all the things that we are trying to do, build relationships and connections. And so that was very nice and a favorite part of mine. Other questions?
How about you went to the 9/11 exhibit? I just got to go a few years ago, very powerful. Any reflections on that?
There was this room where they had the names of all the people in these like big screens all over where you could press the names and it showed their background. And it just showed that they were people too. And just for them to say like 2,000 something people died, doesn't really mean anything if you have, if I wasn't alive, we weren't alive when that happened. But to be able to see the people and their families in the room just made it a lot more realistic.
Yeah, like what Sydney said, since we were like four before it was happening, I don't really feel like we had like any like memories connected to the event. So it, the 9/11 memorial, it was like really like cool to see all this stuff. They're like, they had all these like, like pillars and like foundation. And also like the room with all the people, it really connects numbers and like humanizes them and war force.
Yeah, I think they did an amazing job honoring the lives lost during 9/11. And it was just nice to see everything put together so nicely.
I have a question. So Mr. Minahan came in and he proposed this field trip and he talked about getting on a plane, which normally we do buses and flying down to New York City. I want to know, so I remember dropping Rebecca and Sydney off at 6:30 in the morning, I think it was. And then Mrs. Social brought Sydney and Rebecca back a little after midnight. So my question to you would be, in the future, if there were field trips like this, do you think that the school committee should approve them? And how did you feel about the experience? Do you think it's something that other people would want to experience?
Definitely. I think the plane was pretty cool because I know some kids haven't been on the planes in years. I think a lot of the kids haven't been on since he was like maybe a baby. So this was like his first real time being on a plane. And so like sharing that with the class and the period is pretty cool. Especially going to New York for blister with your class, that's a pretty awesome experience.
And it wasn't, honestly, it wasn't that expensive either. It went really smooth, like all aspects went really smooth. The only thing that wasn't smooth was like the delay, but it was only really not, it wasn't very long. It could have been worse. So I think definitely we should be doing these things more because I got a lot out of it.
Yeah, I agree. I felt like because of COVID and like lockdown, there's a lot of things that we could have experienced. And this is like, I think my first field trip since seventh grade, I think, or eighth grade. So yeah, it was fun.
I think it's just awesome that he birthed this idea and had the kids go, because when, I think it's great. Did you ride the subway?
Yes.
I kind of said New York City as a joke when you said we should take a field trip. But I mean, he was so like enthusiastic about it. And we all thought of new and exciting things you could do in New York. And we realized the Federal Reserve's in New York, so that was our main kick to go.
So great. And you all speak so well in front of a group of people.
A little scared. I know there's a camera right there, so it's not. Yeah, we've got this watching.
Anyone else? Gerald?
I just wanted to know, what surprised you about New York City? Like if you went down there thinking one thing about it, what change did you have after you came away from being younger for a day? Or did you have one?
Yeah, it was, it was all, I thought at home, being from Boylston, biggest city I ever met was like Boston, which is this big compared to New York City apparently. And so it was like a culture shock. And it was just like, everything that I've seen in movies is kind of like it, but it's just like more like tame and not as wild.
Yeah, everyone that we saw, like, I, I was kind of expecting on the New York subway that everyone would just be weird and they would be. Everyone was like they've done it a million times. Everyone was just like, it just seemed like it was their home. And it was just interesting to see that because it was not normal for me when I was sitting on the subway.
Yeah, I bet there was any more rats.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, I think it's a great idea what you did. And I hope that you guys as students are, become, I don't know the grades here, but become ambassadors to your other students in the school, encourage them to do things like this. Encourage teachers to bring up these ideas, whether it's New York, Boston, some, you know, whatever city it is. If there's, the best way to learn and to grow yourself is to get outside of your home, your comfort zone, experience the world. You guys have seen that firsthand now, even in New York, there's plenty of rats there, don't worry. But I, I hope you become ambassadors for the rest of the school and the community and the towns. And the interested, encourage them more like this. Sounds great. I think you'll find an encouraging school committee who will accept your ideas.
And Kayden, I think you're going to graduate in a week or so, right?
Uh, yes, June 5th, Mr. Sari. Free Montauk. Uh, Sacred Heart University. I messed up on that.
Sacred Heart, is it?
Yes.
Congratulations. Thank you so much for coming and speaking. We really, really appreciate it. I'm so excited that you did this. And I mean, they're going to have memories and experiences and it's real world learning. So thank you.
You're welcome. And thank you to the committee and to everybody who was involved for their support. It was, you know, a team effort from start to finish. And thank you for the opportunity to come and speak. And as you say, to be ambassadors for this concept and to try and do this again in the future. Awesome. Thank you.
So we're going on to item numbers, well, I'm sorry, reports. We're going to move on to Mr. Zany.
So the first thing I want to talk about is the Director of Finance and Operations position. I mentioned how old Mr. Parker was leaving us shortly and we miss him. And we went through an extensive search and considered a number of qualified candidates for the position. But, but anyhow, hands down, I think the most choice was Mrs. Nancy Koeniski. She's here today. And Mrs. Koeniski is a graduate of Western Union College in Springfield. She's been a business manager since she was 12. Worked in a couple of positions. She's currently a sitting business manager. She's held several financial positions in the private sector before that, in the banking industry also. She's licensed by the D E S C. Right? Because she's a member of Masco and Society for HR Management. So. Would you like to say a couple words?
Sure.
Before you take the barrage of, you've got to take the sword and, and shield. Mr. Burns gets that.
Great. Well, as, I'm Nancy Koeniski. Thank you very much. I was fortunate enough to spend a couple hours with Bob today. I can tell that I have big shoes to fill. You can see he's done a great job with the finances. So thank you for showing me the ropes a little bit today. But I look forward to hopefully joining you and thank you. Thank you very much.
Are there any questions? Could I have a motion to approve the appointment of Mrs. Nancy Koeniski? Did I say that right? Koeniski, right?
Yes.
Okay. As the new Director of Finance and Operations as of July 1st, 2027. 2020. So. Can I have a second?
Second.
Discussion on favor? I'm an I as well, opposed. Motion to approve the appointment of Mrs. Nancy Koeniski as the new Director of Finance and Operations as of July 1st, 2022. Pass this.
I think this is where you said she can go with.
Oh, yes, actually, yes, you can go. Don't feel like you have this thing.
You had a long day. I know two hours where Bob can be like. You must be exhausted.
Aren't you asking the advocacy team whether I should be complaining or you should be complaining?
So truly, if you feel like.
So also, before I get to my goals, I would like to acknowledge a retiring principal, Diane Tussary, who's been here for 32 years. I don't know if as a teacher, a young teacher, been hired in the past five or 10 years who works in here, went to school, who didn't have Diane as a, I don't know if that makes you feel old enough. Just the amount of things that Diane has done for the district, you know, just 32 years. And I think all except one year in this district, which is a testament to Diane's dedication to this school and to this district. Yeah, and also to our district, that someone would want to stay for that long. She's somewhat of a historian in the district. If you want to know something about the old school or anything that went on here since 1989, Diane's the person to ask it. So we're going to miss her. She started as a physical education teacher and coach Dean of Students, when I was a Dean of Students and Principal. So we really are going to miss you, Diane, but we wish you luck. We don't even have a lot of years to go.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay. That was the fun part. And now, now, I'm going to do my goals now. And I know one committee member last year said, no, don't beat all this stuff. It's very boring. You know, Mike, I have to admit, you were right. So I, you know, when you, when you, you know, when I used to teach and I'd do a lesson, sometimes I'd have to say, you know, I'm really boring myself. Let's do something else. I won't, I won't go through and read it. So I think you've got targets like this, so it's easy for you to follow, easier than online. Goal one was the equity goal. And I've talked about this a number of times. This is a goal we started a couple of years ago. And so the goal, my. And so the goal, my goal this year was to broaden the sphere of influence related to equity by including staff from the district and to create a district equity statement. And so, so that's really what the, what the work had meant for the last week is. And this year we've increased the team. We initially started off with just the leadership team. And what we're trying to do is just basically trying to find out, you know, what does it mean to us as a district? Before we start going out to the teachers, but like what do we see equity meaning? And we realized that we really had to make it personalized, that we were going to, you know, find out if there were any inequities in our district and then attack those first. And so one of the things that happened this year is I worked with the principals to create, asked them to look in schools and find places where you think they might be inequity. And then treat it as a science project, you know, just have a hypothesis and then see if you can prove it or not. And what else, and you know, collect all the data first. So that really was the equity work this year. So in terms of evidence, I said we would have a, an equity statement and that is in your packet under goal number one. First page is the meaningful part of this year. Second page is the equity statement. And again, you know, one other thing that we, we did as a leadership team, we put together a, a rough draft. And the idea was to then take that rough draft, bring it to the bigger group and have them refine it with the help of teachers 21. And so we've come up with this, of course, it's a working document and again, we, we didn't want to, we didn't want to over promise. But at the same time, we think that for a small district, we should be flexible. We should be able to give students the individual attention they need. And if there are inequities, we should deal with them and not have any preconceived idea of where those inequities are. So and the principals' goals were fantastic. Ace's goal is in there. He looked at ELL students and whether we override, identify ELL students in special education. And that's a big topic these days. A lot of times, a language, a language issue is diagnosed as a disability if you're not, if you're not careful. So we don't want our students to be diagnosed, not speaking English is not a disability. So Ace had some interesting results with that. It's in there. I'm sure you take it, had a chance to take a look at it. John had an issues in goal is another one that's, you know, would seem like it'd be common sense. But is there, is there equity in the way you call on students? Now, when you ask a question, it's a form of, it's an informal sort of testing, you know? And so you want to make sure that there's no inequities there. So John looked at things like, you know, does a student, does a teacher call on all kids on the left side of the class or the right side of the class? Call on mostly males, call on mostly females. A big one, does, does the teacher call on, on kids who always have the hand raised? Because we know from, you know, national data, if the kid raises his, the kid who doesn't raise his hand can always hide. And that's, that's not good. You have to draw that student out, you know, kind of in a meaningful way, not embarrass the student. But that's a student that can get behind, you know? And you have to observe these things and you have to point these things out to teachers. And I, I, I'll tell you this story from my own background when I was a teacher that I, my department had observed me and said, you know, you always call on people on the left side of the classroom. And, and I realized the reason I did is because I had an overhead check, which was high tech back then. I used to write my notes on it and it would be reflected on the board. It was a big deal. But because I'm right-handed, I always turned this way and the light was bright. So I couldn't look into it and see the people, the kids on this side of us. So if you wanted to just hide, which a lot of them did in my class, you would sit over here because they, you know, they knew I couldn't see them. So I never thought about it until somebody, somebody called it out. Then Diane's was looked at inequities in terms of gender. And we, we've done a lot of work in the last couple of years with science, technology and engineering. And there was some, 20 years we've been working on this now and there are still some places where some groups are, some genders are underrepresented. And so that's one of the things that Diane and Sally looked at. And so the idea this year was to tend to, not necessarily a run through, but take it in stages. Have a hypothesis, collect the data, see if what you're thinking was correct. And then next year the follow-up on that goal is going to be, so okay, now what do we do about that? So now that they have two people in the building that can act as advisors for this, they can start, those two people can start, you know, professional development, can start working with the faculty and they can start working on these projects. And there's no shortage of them here. It's all small things. Look at the, the, you know, John's, it seems just again, so common sense and, but it, it has a profound impact on students. So those are the kind of equity things that we, we look at. And I only say that because I know we, you know, one of the other things I was supposed to produce here is an equity, the Equity Survey. It's not in here, but you do have a copy of it. You know, one of the comments in there, like, you know, one of them has the questions or, you know, if there's some kind of hidden meeting. And it's really just trying to collect data. And if you don't, if you don't know us, if you, if you, if you just look at the survey, it, it does kind of seem like, well, maybe they're up to something. And especially with the politics around this stuff. But that's not, that's not the case. And if you look at our work, you know, our work is focused around just this district and what we see. Does an equity go on someplace else? Somebody else will deal with them. Our job is to deal with the kids and, and staff and, and the community and our two districts. And so we stand by that. So that's the equity goal. See if there's anything else I was supposed to. The second goal was the, the principal walkthrough. That I actually started, I think, the second year I was here and put in that hole, hold for a couple of years with COVID. We started, revived it this year. And really, you know, what you want ultimately is you want the principals to, you know, get into the habit of they going in, just getting out of their chairs and going into the classroom, having, you know, developing a routine where they have follow-up conversations with the, with the teachers, that the teachers get used to them being in there. And our principals all go into the classroom, but you know, so that the teacher knows when, when, when the principal leaves, not just when the superintendent is there, that there's going to be a follow-up meeting. We had a four-point survey, that there's going to be a survey to say, okay, you know, what do you think about, what do you as a teacher see what was going on when I came in? What, you know, what was your impression of it? And follow-up meetings with the teacher and then take that data, but then use it as a springboard for what the next walkthrough is going to be. And the principals did things a little bit differently, which is okay. John and Ace changed up their focal areas a little bit. Diane concentrated on the, basically the same ones for all of our meetings. You can do it either way, just a sort of a matter of preference. It depends what each principal is trying to get at in the school. There might be something that we see as a weakness that they've been observing. So that's going to be the, that's going to be the focus, focus area.
Can I ask you a question that we don't need waiting to happen?
Go ahead.
So the DeHondo walkthroughs, were those separated by middle and then high school? Because I read on there, it just seemed like there were only three for those observation dates.
Okay, so.
How did that happen?
So Diane decided.
Yeah.
What we, so what happens with the program isn't based on the research for better teaching, the superintendent, supervision of principals. And so it's like a gradual release. So when we did these originally, we'd sit down, we'd come up with these focal points. And then we decide, we had a couple of assistants in place, but we basically decided, okay, who are we going to observe? Based on the focus area. So, and then the program, as you go on, so this is really like the third year we've done this. The principals start doing that stuff. And so what they would do is depending on what they see going on in the schools, because they see it every day, they would decide what teaches. So if they've seen something in the middle school, with the middle school teachers, we'd focus on middle school teachers that day. Is there something at the high school that they want to take a look at, we'll focus on high school teachers. And sometimes it's just a mix. And honestly, MCAS, sometimes it's like, we want to go there, but if we don't do it today, it's going to be two weeks. So let's, let's kind of mix and match today. So it kind of looks like a jumble, but there's a, there's some thoughtfulness that goes in on, into it. It just depends on what they're seeing and so they, they go and control that.
So, okay, so how do we see that? Is what I guess is what I. Because I looked in the drive-by, I couldn't, I was trying to understand and I only saw three observations.
Well, I meet with each of them once a month.
Right, yeah.
So you won't because I would not have put names.
Oh, no, not the, I was looking instead of, you know, it's a teacher one, teacher two, teacher three.
Right.
So there were three observations done and I'm just wondering if those observations are done. So how, how is the middle school getting observed during that time?
No, you wouldn't know, but I wouldn't, I can tell you those were middle school.
If they were or not middle school, so.
I, I know they were because I was there, but.
Oh, yeah, great. Okay, that's great.
But I, I wouldn't necessarily tell you that. It's just, we don't make a distinction between whether we go to middle school or high school. You might.
So yes, my question would be why wouldn't you leave that station if they're separate?
I do. I wouldn't make it to you because then you might be able to identify who we're talking about here.
What if you do it for elementary schools with the same principal? Who's confused?
Well, at the elementary school, it's all one level.
Right, but still potentially, no, not like I would.
Yeah, that's why we do it there too. So that's why we try to take, try to like, there's one of them in there that I'm thinking, if somebody, if somebody was in the schools enough, they'd know who this was. And so, you know, I have to, have to be on, so I'm on the fence on what I give you and what I don't give you. Because some of it, I say I'm going to give evidence and then I look at it, I'm like, well, I don't want to start putting lies through everything. And I realize if someone's in school enough, they'll be able to figure out who this is. And so, you know, I sort of walk a line when that happens. So, but I'm not answering your question or anything else. So what, what is?
I guess my question is, if, 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 if you're doing walkthrough observations to meet these student learning goals, and this is coming to us as part of the evaluation, help me evaluate based on that if I don't know what was being evaluated, what, what level.
Focus areas?
No, what level of, I, I, I can't speak to the middle school.
Well, how would you know anyway? Even if I told you, how would you be able to? How would you be able to determine if it's middle school, high school?
Because I think they're two different schools, right? Even though they're not here.
That, that's true, but that's not my job. My job with them is to develop a, develop procedures for them to be able to go in and make observations. Their job is to decide in their building if they're going, who they're going to observe and what they're going to do. So, and my part of the goal is to, to help them develop those procedures and those routines to be able to go in and make those observations. So the only, but when I go in, it's not the only time they go in.
Sure.
So, so the goal is that if I can do this work from Cala, does similar work from the date, develop those procedures and those protocols so that when we're not there, they can go. So it's, it's really irrelevant who I see when I go in. I want to see a development of, of a protocol. So I want to see them sending out surveys to teachers. I wanted to do that more.
Would that protocol be different, whether it was middle school or high school?
No, no, it's the same. It is the same for elementary too.
So maybe it's more equity thing, like you've seen middle schools, much of this in high schools, much of this in high schools.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
I do, I do. And then, you know, so in their, in their buildings, you know, obviously they're going to focus. We have another system that gets put into place. I don't want to talk too much about it, but basically what happens, so a teacher who, who needs more help, the principals will see, because maybe like they see them once a week. And then there's group teachers who they're okay and they maybe see them once every three weeks. And then there are teachers who, you know, they have rock stars and so, but you're going to keep an eye on them, but you don't see them as much. So they make that decision. So when I go in, all I'm trying to do is work with them to develop the teams. Who they see, how they do that actual evaluation, it doesn't matter what level it is to me. So I, because I only go in to do these formal things with them. I do once, I do each room once a month. So it's even irrelevant to me. I already know like that, that last one was from the last observation, so I remember that. But if I were to look at the other ones, if I didn't see the names, I wouldn't know. And it's not important to me either. My part of the superintendent is to create a, you know, a sustainable protocol for principals to use to go in and make observations on teachers. It's going to be the same at every level. They vary a little bit. Like I said, you know, Diane thought it was more important to have consistent focus areas that she saw multiple times. John and Ace had multiple focus areas. So it's, it's going to vary. So I don't even really, I don't really make that distinction between those three of them. It's just, are they, are they able to develop those routines? So when I get the, you know, when I get the surveys and what you call, even sending the surveys out, are they getting feedback from the teachers? Are they having those conversations? Because that's really important.
Ask a question to that one. So as I look at the log I have here of walkthroughs that were conducted in corresponding survey responses. I look, for example, at DeHondo and see that they were walkthroughs done in December, January, March and May. But I only see a survey response related to the walkthrough in June.
I just gave you a sampling of them, just to show you what they, what I was trying to do with them. So, you know, I wanted to show.
So the process was followed consistently across all of these to what I see.
Yeah, yeah. And so, you know, the evidence was to develop, like, so if we look at one of the action stuff.
Yeah, do you remember?
You know, develop a four, like a four-point. You know, so a four-point scale, then an open response and then, you know, and then this is another feedback room. So you can find that in there. You can see it, that they'd actually developed that.
Okay, we're not going to see all of that.
No, just a sampling. So, so you're not going to see all of their stuff, but just what I said that I was going to provide sample. So that's that goal. And again, I think the, you know, we've come a long way on it, although I think that, you know, COVID is really, we do it further along than, than without COVID. So that's goal two. Goal three, this was, you know, this was, I think we talked about this one in January. It's the one I was, had the most issue with because, so this was my professional practice goal. And when I taught, I, when I set these goals earlier, I know Susan did a lot of work with me on them. And it was, I'm trying to find a professional practice goal. And sort of beyond the point in my career where, you know, taking classes and doing that kind of stuff. And one of the things, you know, that she said, and I made a lot of sense, why don't you pick something that's really appropriate to where you are and, you know, maybe your post-career, whether it be two, three, four years down the road. And so, I, you know, I thought about it. I, I've been in regional schools for a long time. I like regional schools, oddly enough, regional districts. And so, and I thought that would be some work that I would do when I retire. And my mentor is actually the executive director at MAS, the Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools, is close by. And it's probably something I'll be involved with when I retire. And so I wanted to start doing work in it. But it was a weird idea because as I said, usually there's more things that are offered, there's things that are offered to teachers. And this year really, not so much. You see the list here. It's all things that are chapter 70, funding, leadership and organization. These are all end year pull-up training. And Bob did that one year. They have a superintendent, their superintendent, what do you call it? Like a mentoring course that they, that I went through. Like a mentoring course that they, that I went through, really on. So, but not a lot of stuff for teachers. So I've gone to the meetings and, you know, provided what was available for administrators. And I'll continue with this next year. I'm hoping that, you know, we can expand this in office stuff for teachers. That was one of the, my action steps that I wasn't able to get to. And I think I said that in January, that I was, I was not going to be able to get to that. So this one was, this one, you know, it didn't, you know, what I said I was going to do, but I would say as a professional practice goal. I was hoping it would work for myself, and I got a hundred. That's it.
Does anyone have any questions for you?
Are you first of all, equity goal?
Yes.
Or what were the teachers doing? Glad you could do that.
That's a good question. That's a good question. We wrote them on because we thought, okay, let's bring someone on who's not us, who has expertise here. They did some great stuff, we can always agree with them. We did a couple of years of work with them. We think we're far enough along that we don't have to bring them back. You know, we have a line of accused, you know, in case we need them. There is one of the consultants that we thought about bringing back as a speaker. But we think we, we're far enough along that we can, we can do, we can at least begin some of our work. We've collected a lot of data this year. Julie had asked questions about the equity score, and, you know, we're going to do all of that. And so we're going to put together a three-year improvement plan. We've collected all this data, now we're going to just start analyzing and figure out what exactly are we going to do with this. We're going to have a student, we're going to have a student survey in the fall. We'll be asked about that. We don't know what it's going to look like. The answer to your question, we don't have anything scheduled for next year. We can always call them if we can, but we're going to try to sort of make it our own from hereon in, hereon in, and see where that goes. Is that something that you want us to continue with them, or is that?
Well, if you answered yes, the next question was Cox's. And how is the state operating?
Yeah, they're not cheap, none of them are. So, and that's the other reason. We think we've got enough information that we can, we can sort of, we can sort of do this. Yeah, we'll know once we analyze the, once we start analyzing all these reports and all the data. And equity statements, so.
I just have a comment. I like what the principals chose to look at in classrooms, because I think those are really important issues. And especially in our district. I think it was thinking outside the box as to what the traditional equity surveys would be or what you'd be looking for in a classroom. And I thought they were great.
So, now I also want to mention, my goal was to focus on the principals, three principals. But Sally also had a science and technology goal, vice-science, technology, and engineering, as we all have faculty goals, so.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Mr. Conry, our current director of finance and operations, would give a business office update.
Alan, when I had a lot of items last meeting, so keep it brief this time. So just as you know, our budgets were approved by the towns. And it was a long process, not necessarily an easy process. And I just want to thank, first, the administrative team for their work and patience and kind of working through some of the challenges that we had. They put a lot of thought into schools. And we can't always support everything that we want to do. And we had to make some difficult decisions. And we arrived at one that was feasible to the towns while also kind of enhancing what supports we're providing to our students. So I also want to thank the school committee. I know you had a lot of questions throughout the process and appreciate your support. And particularly coming to some of the meetings you've had with the towns. I find that's helpful and would encourage you to continue to do that. I think it helps in obtaining support from the towns as opposed to just administrators. Having folks who live in the towns be there to be part of discussions helpful. I also want to publicly thank, and I've said it to them personally, but the select boards and the Fed comms of both towns. They don't have an easy job either, kind of balancing tax considerations, funding, they're getting, other funding sources. I think particularly this year, it was a little bit of a shift, where the challenge was more with Berlin than with Boston. And so I just wanted to acknowledge their work and kind of give and take with us to arrive at something that is workable. And I would also, one of the things I planned to do for the next meeting is just to kind of outline some longer-term considerations. I do believe that the challenges that I had would be a little more prevalent in Berlin than Boston, primarily because of some potential commercial developments in Boston, because of a decline in vocational acceptances from Boston students. It's getting hard for them to get into the passive, which is a question for those who want to go there. And if they do want to go, they probably have to think about whether they want to travel somewhere further. And I'm not sure if that's going to be something they have something to do. So there's a decline in vocational expenses that may be an opportunity to get more support for Boston, particularly the elementary school, which is a little bit below peer groups in terms of per people's spending. And I know we've looked at some things that they have to as well. So I do see that as a potential future challenge. I just want to kind of outline some things for the next meeting, so you have the record. And so Nancy has the record of more structural financial issues. I'm not going to be advocating for resources that schools need. That's the administrative team's job. But things like funding for OPEC and reducing school choice usage, which you've heard about, and how to do that in a gradual way, so you don't have a budget shock in the near. I also want to just mention, too, that the budget's done. We start this in October. And this is a long process, and things happen and change. So I don't want to have you worry about this, because it's going to be solved. It's pretty much solved already. But we've had things come up that are going to cost money that we did not budget. And those surprises happen throughout the year. Sometimes it's good news, sometimes it's not expense-wise. And so there are some challenges that have arisen and some unbudgeted special education costs. I just wanted to give a shout out to our special ed department, particularly Michelle. Janelle and I talked about applying for extraordinary circuit breaker relief. We have two tuitions we did plan for. So you can get extraordinary relief and your costs increase a certain amount in a given year. So when I talked to Janelle, we thought, well, let's go ahead and through and try to apply. I thought we might get about $5,000 doing some quick miles, maybe some cost would be eligible. So it's going to be a lot of work, $5,000. But we said, well, Janelle, you're new. I'm kind of new. Karen used to do this, why don't we learn? Well, Michelle did all the work. And we came up with the $5,000. So, you know, all the work we did in the budget is fine, but things happen and change. And, you know, John, Ace, and Diana all had different things come up that we end up having to find ways to cover for. So fortunately for this year, a lot of that came through. It was supported by Michelle doing the work to get us an additional $5,000 in emergency circuit breaker relief. So I just wanted to give her a shout out. She does it work very quietly additionally. And I know that she gets publicly recognized. I just wanted to give her a shout out for that.
I want you to buy our lunch.
Jeff, oh God, don't forget that. That's an alligator, huh?
So that is my report.
All right, I would like to invite Principal Pessier to share an update on Tohoto Middle High School.
Thank you. I'd like to first begin by talking about our math course sequence for algebra at Tohoto. So in 2017, the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks was revised for mathematics. And so, working with Carol and our math department chair, Francine Gleason, as well as our math coach, Rebecca Cox, in the middle school, we looked at beginning to align our current Tohoto curriculum to that of the curriculum, revised curriculum frameworks, to make sure that our students had a strong foundation for algebra. You know, what we were seeing in COVID, I think, really brought it more to light, was that with beginning in the sixth grade, having, you know, differentiation in the sixth grade with an advanced Math VI, and then having our students then going into, some of our students going into Algebra I, what we were seeing, and I think if you take a look at our MCAS for math in the middle school, we were seeing students with gaps in curriculum, because what they were essentially doing was trying to fit in curriculum in grades six, seven, and eight into two years. And that was creating gaps. And then what then happens is, the students then progress up to high school, where if they don't have a strong algebraic foundation, it catches up to them. And then what ends up happening is then the teachers up at the high school level have to do some remedial work prior to them being able to get to their curriculum. So it's, you know, it's almost like a chain reaction. And so we are looking at, and will begin aligning next year, our pathway to match that of the state's recommended pathway. I think some of the, you know, questions and concerns that I think some parents may have is, well then, how is my child going to get to AP Statistics? And that is still, I mean, that is obviously still achievable. As stated in the documentation and the pathway, that students would be able to, when they get up to high school at certain levels, be able to double up in mathematics. Currently, we do have students that double up for a variety of reasons. And that would still be available to them. And, you know, next year really is more of a transition year. So I know that, you know, there was a concern that, you know, students have, you know, in the eighth grade going into ninth grade, had already selected their courses for next year, as were, you know, students in grades nine through 11. That has not impacted. The change that we see for the 2022, 2023 school year will be in grades, incoming grades six, seven, and eight. And all of the courses that are being revised and realigned are, the curriculum is already approved within the courses. It's just sort of how we sequence those courses, you know, each year. And does anyone have any questions about that?
I have one.
Sure.
So you see on the pathways in the drive, so you're getting rid of for next year. And I think it's a great idea, actually, definitely ready on the foundations, and then going to high school. So I just found that, I don't think. So there's going to be no sixth grade, it's going to be all sixth. Everyone's at the same level.
Correct.
Seventh grade, you're going to have a regular seven, and then an accelerated seven.
Yes.
No algebra, I think.
Well, there's, there's, there are algebra concepts taught within that, yes. Just not being called algebra. Because really, Algebra I is a high school course.
Right.
Typical, you know, it's typically a high school course. So even if students take, you know, for instance, even if students take, you know, those students that are taking Algebra I now in eighth grade, when they get up into high school, their high school transcript doesn't say Algebra I. It will say geometry, Algebra II, probably pre-calculus, and then either calculus or AB, because they take it, they have been taking it in middle school.
Okay, okay. So then these current seventh graders that have picked their eighth grade classes, if that Algebra I, I mean, yes, the Algebra I in seventh is no longer offered. They're just being moved right into accelerated math then, instead of that Algebra.
It will, it'll be, right. It'll be dependent upon the assessments and, you know, and the recommendations. They have done quite a bit of assessing of the students in sort of a readiness exam. Because again, COVID, you know, we're seeing the teachers not being able to get through all of the curriculum that is, that would typically have, we'd be able to get through in, in like an Algebra I.
Yep.
So they're going to, basically, the current students now that are in Algebra I in seventh grade, they will take Algebra I Part B in seventh grade, so that they make sure that they have that foundation. And they finish up the remainder of that algebra curriculum that they were not able to get to. Because we then just said, okay, well, you know, that's fine, and we're going to put you into geometry. When they get up into Algebra II, it's not going to be good.
I get it. So then where do the good kids go from accelerated math seven to eighth grade?
So some of the more advanced students, so the current students?
Yeah, so.
Current eighth graders?
Current seventh graders right now in accelerated math.
Yeah.
So that's Algebra I essentially, right?
Yeah, Algebra I, they would go to Algebra I Part B.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Just to solidify that foundation, okay, great.
To finish up curriculum that was not able to be completed and to solidify those skills prior then, prior to them moving on to geometry and then Algebra II.
Okay, yes, I see, okay. Okay, this isn't starting in high school until 2023?
Let me see, 2022.
2022.
Yes, correct.
Okay, okay.
Correct.
All right, I think it's great.
Yes.
Makes sense.
Thank you.
Sure.
I'd like to also, in my report, just give a recap. I'd like to thank Matt Picaro for doing all the crunching of the numbers for us. We really had an exciting year in athletics this past year. We had, it started with the end of the, the close of the school year last year, where our baseball, softball, and lacrosse teams all made the district tournaments last year. Baseball won the District III Division IV tournament and played in the state semifinals as well. During this year alone, we had 475 students participate in 38 sports. And that's with a part-time athletic director. And, you know, that is an amazing accomplishment. In the fall, Tohoto had over 200 students participate in sports in the fall. And some of the students participated on the West Boyles' football team. We also had West Boyles to join us for golf and cross-country teams in our co-op program. And the fall season was one of the most successful in Tohoto's school history. Girls' cross-country team placed first in the inaugural Central Mass tournament. Field hockey, boys soccer, and girls soccer all placed first in their league. Boys soccer team first league title in 15 years. The girls' soccer team hosted a final eight appearance in the state tournament, in which they went into overtime. And the winter, again, brought great athletic success. Eighty-eight students participated in middle school JV and varsity basketball. Cheer and ice hockey co-op with Hudson. And the boys and girls' basketball team both qualified and gained, gained a couple of wins in the state tournament. The girls' basketball team won its first league title in the history of the school. And right now, we have 175 student athletes participating in the spring. A number of our track students participated in the state meet. And baseball ranked number two in the state, softball number seven, and lacrosse number 13 will all be hosts to begin the first-ever Central Mass spring tournaments. So it really is an exciting year. And I think it's, again, I think it's great that the kids are, you know, were able to get back in full swing and have, you know, as many students as we had participate in athletics. And I'd like to thank the coaching staff as well, and all of our student athletes. And then the last page, you can see upcoming of. And then the last page, you can see upcoming events. This is probably our busiest time of the year at the school. This last month of school is a whirlwind with a lot of things going on. So I just added some of those important dates. And as Kate had mentioned, graduation is, is June 5th at 2:00 PM in the Tohoto Genesee.
Thank you.
I'd like to invite Principal Thompson to share an update on the boys in elementary schools.
Thanks a lot. I want to apologize for my voice. There's a germ in elementary school. Finds its way to the nurse's office. I have a very tired, I do have my COVID test, but you know, I'm actually concerned for everybody. I'm wearing masks tonight. I will try to keep it brief. Hopefully, my voice will help out. I wanted to talk a little bit. We have completed MCAS today. We celebrated with an ice cream party courtesy of the superintendent. I wanted to just comment on the perseverance.
Wait, 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 wait.
I'd like to comment on perseverance.
Try this tomorrow. And it'll be better than this.
So we finished MCAS on June 8th. We have grades six, seven, eight. Six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. We'll talk tomorrow. Kristi, come on.
Sorry, boss.
No one will use the whole ice cream blizzard on these two.
We had a lot of ice cream.
Part of our wellness policy here.
Taking down this retirement.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. That's okay.
I'd like to comment on the perseverance of our kids. They worked well beyond the minimum requirements that they needed to walk it around. You can see a lot of them using the strategies that the teachers had asked them to employ. So they worked really hard. And I'm looking forward to seeing the results. I also want to recognize Mrs. DePanza, who is my lead teacher, but also my testing czar in the building. And she's the one that works through all the schedules, works through all the accommodations, and makes sure that we have departures that wouldn't, wouldn't have happened, it wouldn't have been a success without, without her work. I want to talk a little bit about some end of the year events. We actually have been able to do some things we haven't been able to do the last, for, I want to say, three years. Our Boys in Education Foundation had a PDS bingo. They moved it outside, which I think, I'm not on board, I don't get a vote, but I think we should do that from now on. It was a beautiful evening. The weather cooperated perfectly. And the kids had places to go play on the field. And they got a little bored with the bingo. I'm not looking forward to finding out the final candidate, but I know that they've been well over $10,000 on the event. So a tremendous amount of work on their part. And it was great to see the whole community back together. And so we have the PDS out there. And now the PTO is in full swing. We're planning for our race for education in a couple of weeks. They have targeted a goal of $18,000 raised. I know that they're about a third of the way there. And again, we'll let the whole community in so that, you know, everybody can run around the field and have a great time. There, it wasn't at the time, but there was a promise that if they beat their goal, I didn't check this with the new boss, but the principal will sleep on the roof once again if they make that call. It's the best of all of the stupid things that I've done. It's like a night away. Kids, set up a tent up there. Don't tell the kids because they think he's torture. So we're looking forward to kind of renewing some old traditions. And then finally, I feel remiss if I didn't mention Beth Fletcher, because her dying is this year. She's been a fixture at Boys in Elementary School for 16 years. Her career at DES can actually drive to the high school now. Probably couldn't have a parking spot. And so she's impacted too many kids to count in that community. And I know that she's going to be missed, but I'm also really happy for her for the opportunity to retire. You can see there's a long new list of upcoming events. The spring is, is a very busy, fun, exciting time. I did want to highlight two and invite everybody on the committee, if you would like. We will have our combined concert tomorrow here at Tohoto at 7:00. I'm stealing this so John can't say it now. It's, again, a tradition we have not been able to have the last couple of years, where we bring the Berlin and the Boyle's band, of course, together for a performance on the big, in front of the big lights. And it's a, it's a great time. Jackie Bresson, Audrey Thompson are teachers that make that happen. Should be beautiful. The other one I wanted to point out, the one that sealed John Sundar, was Friday, June 10th. We have a Connect Challenge. And that's something that Carol has worked with Fisher, our thermal Fisher, to help support. We get connect boxes in the fifth grade, and we give them the challenge. They work in small groups and they, they create something. This year, it's a delivery system for a vaccine. So the pro-life travel to DES will have everybody set up in the gym. They'll have a lot of time to put their creations together using the blueprints that they've already created. They'll be judged by professional scientists around with the, with the rubric. And we ultimately award all the prizes to Boys in Elementary School. But it's, it's great. The kids have a wonderful time. It's, talking about hands-on learning opportunities, especially in the spring when it's warm and the fifth graders know their MCAs are over. And it really keeps them engaged. It's a, it's a great, it's a great thing that we have. So I think it's for anyone to attend. How's that work?
Are you web streaming? You're sleeping on the roof?
I, in the past, I've done like a read aloud right around bedtime. So I don't know. They gotta make it $15,000. I'm not going to do it alone.
I've heard a rumor that they're selling water balloons. Is it fundraising about that? They're going to throw them at you on the roof.
So, I, not to my knowledge, but.
Be surprised, sorry.
There are, there are some neighboring fathers that I worry about, like firefighters in the middle of the night. Like, I wouldn't be surprised if they came to check on me. So we're just waiting.
Mr. Canwell, would you like to give your update?
Well, there's really, what else do I? Yes, I would. It'd be more entertaining than Mr. Thompson. But it's essential to simplify, you know. We've done, I, it's, I have done so much work to kind of keep the elementary schools kind of pointed in the same direction. So we, actually, we are finishing MCAS tomorrow. The fifth grade's still working on science study ice cream party, which apparently some of our older friends aren't getting. It is tomorrow afternoon. We are all looking forward to Mr. Zangy rolling his sleeves up and serving ice cream in his suit because, you know, that's like super.
There can't be a lot of students here. I don't think I'm going to have to do them.
Hey! They're all wondering. They're looking forward to the ice cream. To kind of echo something that he said, as we get back to normal, and MCAS is a normal way of getting back to normal, it's interesting to see the kids kind of fall right back into their routine. We talked about, and they started talking about before the meeting, it's not about getting the questions for everyone. It's about doing your best on every single question. And we stress that with the kids on every single task. So it's not news. But I had the pleasure of being the third grade teacher giving the ELA test, that's who was best because Mrs. Tucker was on. And the first day, so the kids got, you know, Chromebooks and two pencils and one sheet of paper. And they had to ask for another sheet of paper. And it's to kind of help them sketch out what their little essays that they have to do. And Mrs. Tucker works tirelessly as to all the ELA teachers to kind of help them figure out how they're going to structure their answers. So the first day comes, and they worked hard and they did their best. But as they gathered the scrap paper, because they were basically gathered and shredded. Because the Department of Education has nothing better to do than tell us to do a scrap paper. A lot of black scrap paper. Not a lot of writing on that scrap paper. They went right from writing to keyboard. So I said it in the second day before we got started, you know, I was talking to Mrs. Tucker, you know, you've worked so hard with her. She was so hopeful that you could use your scrap paper to do a better job. And you really think through your answers. Second day, pages were full. It was amazing. So it's just a testament to how hard kids want to work to please their teachers and the work that teachers do every day to kind of get kids ready for bed. It's not, I know in a lot of places, it's a very high-stress time. There are parades and this thing and that thing. It's another day for the kids that are a little worn and spoiled. It's just, it's just another task. It's not a, you know, pointing you to your best. So I was pleased with their efforts. Even though it looked like I would look forward to torturing my colleague, but it doesn't usually work out. We do our best. We do our best. I would have, I would have also wanted you to, the concert tomorrow, I strongly encourage you. I was here yesterday writing shotgun behavior while the kids were rehearsing the chorus was rehearsing. And they blew me away. I mean, it's really good. If you don't know anything else, come to the chorus part. I'm always amazed at the band because they make, what Mrs. Preston called joyful noise.
What happened to it?
At the beginning of the year. And to hear them actually be able to place into all of that, I think it's, a lot of places you can't get that kind of work. And we take the time and we invest in my, in really strong musical education. And come and see the results of their hard efforts. We're like, I mentioned the ice cream. We, I will mention one last thing. It's just one of the things we're going to get to. Berlin Memorial School takes the memorial part of the thing very seriously. For years, we've had a very elaborate memorial day ceremony. It is less elaborate still, but the community's invited this year. So we can put that into about around the end of the week and hope to see, you know, the veterans come and the kids have a song. And when you're a part, if you're a veteran, when your service anthem is played, those veterans stand with the Thompsons. They can see veterans, you know, be reminded of that stuff. So I'm looking forward to that as well. Other than that, I will, I'd like you guys to roll.
Parent care camp.
Parent care, oh, funny. It was so long ago. It was so long ago. Well, I did want to make Mr. Thompson feel bad. But I thought ours was the best parent camp so far.
His hasn't worked.
For sure. Exactly.
Which is great. You'll see the pictures on Facebook.
I'm sure that it will. And Twitter and his tweet and whatever else. And actually, it did go very well. It's, it's an important part of bringing people in. I had to go through all the staff, super hard to get that ready. Carol Castello was kind enough to do some tours of her old building. Because of course, Carol preceded me as principal a little bit more. So she did some tours. And we learned some stuff. You know, it was the first year we took parent care back into the elementary buildings. And we learned some things like touring, you know, we're going to code their baby tags initially so they kind of know when to start turning it out. But something that was important to do again, later on, one of the things that we used to do was, it was just parents. And there was a lot of discussion around, you know, this is a confidential therapist. This is a speech therapist. The teachers are going to get together. They're going to do a video. Everybody will be sent to just the incoming kindergarten parents. So they get that more adult version of those. But again, a lot of people were there. I think all that's perfect dependence. It's just Zangy was there. And Mrs. Castello was there. They just have a question. So thanks for bearing with you. I can say that the creative year can see all the activities going on. Once again, I've been on a part of some of the activities. BES, I've moved down to field trips. I was preparing on Friday. I was a third grade classroom. I went to the library. I think that it's really wonderful to be able to get out there and in the community and look forward to hearing about the education social at Tohoto in June.
Excellent.
Back to you. Equity.
Nice. I don't mind saying that. Definitely equity.
Congratulations, guys. Thank you.
If the principals would like to end their day now and head home, I invite you to celebrate your day. We appreciate you coming. Thank you. Thank you so much. This is Diane's last meeting, too. Thank you, Diane.
September, right? It's September.
So we have to the negotiations, subcommittee update. We have had, it's Megan, Carol, and I, as well as the administration. We've had two meetings, one on April 27th and the other on May 10th. All involved to have worked really well together. And we're hopeful to have, well, we're hopeful to have all the items covered by the end of our next meeting on Thursday of this week, but I believe it's being rescheduled. And we're going to have an executive session at the end of this meeting to update the committee on progress so far. Mr. Totten, do you have a policy subcommittee update?
Yes, thank you, I do. So we met last week. And we have several discrimination and harassment policies for you guys to read or read free tonight. These documents come straight from the attorney's office. So I'm going to put them up there as is a recommend by the attorney. So have a read through those. We took a look at our COVID protocols and policies. There seemed to be a bit of confusion out there around what happened with COVID positive cases in school. But I did notice today, it was nice to see that the news was reporting downward trend in cases and masks today. So that was nice. Congratulations. So we discussed, we discussed with Jeff about when we switched to at-home testing, the state recommended to add an testing procedure or program to do away with the contact tracing. And so we did that. I think that was what we did back then. We added some language into the policy to sort of clarify that. And that's up for the vote tonight. It's more in line with what we discussed earlier this year, what the nurses wrote to us about. It's basically the contact tracing piece was a big administrative burden, getting away time from nurses, teachers, and administrators from their regular duties. So added on top. We've had several discussions this year about that. It really takes time away from the actual teaching that needs to happen. With the recent assessment data that we saw, we know we need all the time we can get for teaching and learning. So it's good that we don't have that. So we added some language in there to clarify that. I believe we'll be able to focus our energies on this with the same COVID policy and protocol, but just a more formalized version that's written all in one place, one document. So we wanted to add this language to the face covering COVID policy, just to maybe clear what our procedure is in the event that there is a positive case coming known to the school districts. So please take a read through it. We have it already. Do the policy and protocol page. It's added to the end of that. We do not have language in there. We don't intend to have language in there that treats any student differently in this protocol in regard to the COVID protocol based on their vaccination status or any other status that they might have. That wouldn't be equitable. We don't think that would be fair. So just to all the nurses, teachers, and administration, we do thank you, congratulate you on your hard work keeping the school safe and open and your dedication to our students. So that policy is out there for a reading and a vote.
Also, like I wanted to add in, the nurses were the ones prior to Dusty suggesting they not do COVID, the contact tracing. They were the ones that felt it wasn't worthwhile. Do you remember the numbers, Jeff? Was it how many, how many contact tracing did they do and then how many actual positives? It was.
It was hundreds.
Yeah, and they were only like, what, 14?
It was single, I don't remember. It was very close.
Yeah. So, so, you know, going away from the contact tracing was not only what Dusty had recommended, but also what our nurses had experienced and felt even prior to Dusty going forward. So I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you, Jen. I appreciate that.
And they weren't able to do, it was against the department, it was so much of that that they weren't able to do or become more difficult to do than daily nursing duties. So they did write the original policy.
Does anyone have any questions or comments?
I had one question on the harassment and sexual harassment and all the first rates. Any reason these, are you, are you doing these in the middle of the border? Are these coming across because they're being recommended?
Those are recommended.
Why were these recommended?
Did they change, did it?
I think, I believe there's slight changes in law, so they just updated them.
Okay.
But there's no significant changes in it at all. Usually, if they, usually, there's two ways this happens. We either get them from the MASC for review, or when they get them, we get them from our attorneys. They're just on some work on, you know, maybe there might be some small changes in there, but significant enough so that they're. They've just done some work on, you know, maybe there might be some small changes in there, but significant enough so that their district should adopt it. So this might wanna adopt that first read, correct, right?
Those, no, those are first reads with the COVID policy protocol.
All right, the superintendent evaluation committee. First, I'd like to thank you for submitting your school committee self-evaluations. And I have a report for you on June seventh. We have our next meeting. Yesterday, you should have received the superintendent evaluation form via email with the information you have gathered over the year as well as the report that Jeff gave tonight. Should be easy to fill out, or should be well-equipped at least to fill out. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to reach out to me. I'm happy to help. Those evaluations are due on or before May thirty first, so that we can have the report written by June seventh. And did this last one is don't forget to download and save your evaluation to your computer and do not fill it out in attachment form. It will not save. And that's a lot of work to be lost. So I wanted to mention that. Does anybody have any questions on the evaluation? Mr. Wilber, do you have an update for our elections subcommittee?
I do. So we received the information from the Secretary of State's office related to the upcoming election for the school committee. So a couple things I'll just note here. So I've spoken with both town clerks, both in Boylston and Berlin. We're gonna plan to open the process to take our nomination papers on Tuesday, May thirty first. The papers can be taken out from either the Boylston town clerk, the Berlin town clerk or from myself as the district clerk. In order to get onto the ballot, you have to collect for Boylston or for our Berlin-Boylston district. Each candidate has to collect at least forty-two signatures. And I remind any interested candidate that when collecting signatures, if you do choose to collect them from both Berlin and Boylston, you have to keep those separated on different forms. Because the Berlin town clerk's gonna receive the form and certified votes from Boylston and Berlin, vice versa in Boylston. And if there's the Berlin name on the Boylston list, the Boylston town clerk will cross it off as an authorized voter. Those are gonna be due back to the town clerks by five P M. on July twenty-sixth. So the process to take out papers and return them will be eight weeks, which is what I understand pretty long compared to other processes to become, get out to a ballot. So I've given people the time they need. The other thing I'll point out is just to remind everybody, there are, all six seats will be up for election in November. There will be three seats for residents of Berlin, three seats for residents of Boylston. On the Boylston side, two of those seats will be for a four-year term. One of them will be for a two-year term. The opposite is the case for Berlin where two seats will be for a two-year term and one will be for a four-year term. So that's the information. I'm gonna prepare a press release to put out to get over to the item as well as other news agencies that are interested in sharing this as well as making sure this information gets from the select boards of both Berlin and Boylston. And so that is my report from the elections committee. Well, this is what happened. We complained about not having elections to become a member of the election.
Adam, there's only forty-two signatures?
Forty-two signatures required in Berlin-Boylston. It's based upon, see, you're a great question. It's based upon the number of voters in the recent election. The number of certified signatures required in the district nomination papers must equal one percent of the last most cast for governor in the district.
And it doesn't, it doesn't have to be a specific percentage from the towns.
Forty-two. You can get forty-two Berlin. I can get forty-two Boylston. I can get twenty Berlin, twenty-two Boylston if I want. However you want to.
You should have to do separate also.
Correct.
I would also encourage you to get more than forty-two, anybody that's running, because a lot of times, or not electors, sometimes they, they will nullify a signature because it doesn't match or the information. So it's always better to go over just to make sure you have forty-five that are approved. I mean, forty-two if you might add.
Correct. Forty-two. Perspective candidates also have to decide when they take out the papers, whether they're taking out papers for the four-year seat or the two-year seat. They have to decide when papers are taken out.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right, now we are moving on to the business items. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the formation of a budget and finance subcommittee.
So move.
Thank you, Mike. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm an aye as well, opposed. Motion to approve the formation of a budget and finance subcommittee is approved. Yay. I'd like to appoint Adam Wilber and Julie Lee to the budget and finance subcommittee. Thank you for your service. I would also like to appoint Mr. Joseph Michaelback as the B B R S D treasurer for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. Thank you very much. And could I have a motion to approve the Marion Hoffman Award? Move. Sorry. Discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, opposed. Motion to approve Marion Hoffman Award passes. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the Moses Reed Tyler Scholarship Award recommendations. Discussion?
Just a question on both of these. I guess I'm trying to understand why these roles sit with us. And I think this has been discussed in the past, if I'm correct, that we ever determined the case of... Would that need to be the case? Would it need to be the case? I'll ask.
Why comes to school?
Yeah.
That I, I don't know why it comes to school. I actually, I know for the Moses Reed Tyler Award, the fund, the person who was in charge of the fund, or actually, I think it was first developed, it was recommended that the school committee approved that. The Marion Hoffman actually wore the same thing, actually. It's recommended by those two families.
I think those are the only scholarships that we grew up in.
Yeah.
It's just the way it was set up at the time.
That's why, yeah. They set it up that way.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye as well, opposed. Motion to approve Marion Hoffman Award passes. I would like a motion to, no, sorry. Did I say Moses Reed, Moses Reed Tyler Scholarship Award recommendations passes? My apologies. I would like a motion to approve the Student Activity Fund Guide. Sure. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm an aye as well. Motion, there's no, nobody else to oppose. Motion to approve the Student Activity Fund Guide passes. I would like a motion to accept the grade seven Tonto field trip to Roger Williams Park Zoo. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
As well. The motion to accept the grade seven Tonto field trip to Roger Williams Park Zoo passes. I would like a motion to accept a donation of nine thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars and ten cents from the Boylston Education Foundation to the Boylston Elementary School for the purchase of five instructional audio systems by light speed. Discussion?
What, what are these?
It is a question.
They're for people who have trouble hearing or, or filtering, it handles the sound. It's like, it's an audiology help, basically. But I mean, I know personally, it benefits all students, not just students who have those needs, like for me personally, sometimes I would find something that helpful. But it's something that's, it's a system technology. Do you have a microphone? Teacher wear or is that? I have a microphone.
The teacher wears mine as a red speaker.
Yeah.
It also helps preserve teacher's voice. They're not having to project as much. They can talk in a very conversational tone. And as Bob was saying, it's, it's a universal design to support everybody's, I think it's like equity inherent, regardless of how large the space is or what your position is.
So this is going into individual classrooms at the B E S?
Five of them.
So we have them now in all of the V N S classrooms. And I think what we started doing is in B E S, we had it in a couple of classrooms. And I'm not sure if they moved to to accommodate a specific student number now. I don't know. This might get us to having it in every classroom. And then so these last a while too, so they, we don't need to replace them now.
They're amazing system. I know that. I am, I hear a lot of heroes from Woodward, the Swarts. When I go into those classrooms, you can stand virtually anyplace. Sometimes I go to a regular classroom and I have trouble hearing the teacher, except when they use those. So, yeah, it's amazing. Anyplace in the classroom you stand, you can, and they're talking in a normal tone.
Do we encourage teachers to, have teachers to use them consistently in their classrooms or do we encourage them to just go outside?
In my experience, teachers that have them equipped in a classroom, once they've been given a chance to get used to them, they do use them regularly, yeah, pretty reliably. Because I think that it also, again, helps them in terms of voice product, you know, production and being able to reach everybody in the room.
And we have, we have five of four right now in I E P.
It could be written into a five of four or an I E P. Yeah, it's a combination of the two. Some students do require them, to Bob's point. But that's not the purpose, right? This, if this is more of a universal design.
Yeah. So thank you to the B E F.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Really nice, yeah.
They didn't tell me nobody wanted me to say that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, opposed. Motion to accept a donation of nine thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars and ten cents from the Boylston Education Foundation to the Boylston Elementary School for the purchase of five instructional audio systems by light speed passes. I would like a motion to accept policy E B C F A with added amendment. Discussion?
Do you have a second?
No, absolutely.
So I'm pleased that we're covering COVID policies and COVID policy. And we can point to this when there are questions about our COVID policies and to the extent to which we even have COVID policies in some cases. As I look at this, there's obviously a continuation of our mask optional policy, except for school health offices. And it's pretty clear reading this that that is the only time and place where we require masks with our schools here in Berlin and Boylston. I also see here that there's language added that says, "When suspected COVID case is presented to the school community, will follow protocol A. No other protocols are necessary. No more should be any other steps contained by school officials." So I, I, I think that what has occurred over the last couple of months is that there have been a combination of recommendations, mandates and requirements from multiple entities, whether it's Dussie or the Mass Department of Health or the C D C. And at this point, many of those are not in compliance with each other. And when we don't have a policy that states what our policy is, different people within a building might look to different other entities to determine what our policy actually is. As I started looking and reading through some of the information that we've even reviewed the month of, back to January or back to August of our opening plan, is there were things even within our own policy approved, adopted, they can put together. So I think that this is our be-all, end-all COVID policy document. It's great. I think that if we in the future need to make adjustments to this, that we come look at this first and make it very easy for our administrators and teachers to understand, nurses to understand what our policies are. I think that prior to now, it's been somewhat a failure of the school committee to not have this as clearly stipulated as we do now, which is to say that there are no other protocols beyond what's in here that we expect from our school if it comes to contact tracing or anything of that nature. And furthermore, it's like, you know, we're putting in place a protocol that specifically speaks to students and I assume staff, individuals that says who test positive. And the requirement is that they will remain out of school for five days in care of terminal symptoms, even though they have a fever for twenty-four hours and experience, improve it in other symptoms. So we certainly, I think, are continuing to be very aware of the COVID situation. We obviously have more cases happening right now. Luckily for everything, most of these cases have pretty mild symptoms. And I think that we continue to monitor this. I know I look at the B B R S D dashboard every Monday morning and can see where it is. And Kristi, thanks for continuing to get that published for us every morning, every Monday morning. It makes us aware of what's going on across our first school district. And I think it's no different than what's going on in the districts across the state right now. I think we continue to have a policy that's appropriate for the current endemic nature of this disease that causes the mild symptoms and the asthma control people get, especially the students who are in our schools. So thank you guys. And I just certainly support you together here.
And we will, we'll certainly, once approved, get it out to the schools and make sure they follow and break them and pause.
Anyone else for discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, opposed. Motion to accept policy E B C F A with added amendment passes. Items J, K, L and M are all the first reads. So we will vote on those next time. Our next in prime meeting is June seventh. We're really looking forward to having you join us as an official member. We need to be expected to get it. Could I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with B B R S D and not return to voting? Excellent. So I'm gonna do a roll call. Julie?
Yes, hi.
Mike?
Aye.
Adam?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. This concludes our meeting. Good night.
Nice work. Do it.